Getting lots of echo.
It seems to be better now, whatever you just did.
Okay. I'm closer to the top of my screen.
No, it's breaking up again. You're breaking up again.
Can you hear me now?
Not well.
Not well.
Can we move, John, and then come back to Steve?
So.
Steve had a call in earlier today when his problem happened.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get a phone. I don't have a phone down here.
Okay, can we come back to Steve, John?
Well, I guess, but then I'll have to. Steve provides the instructions for how people can participate. If you want to move on without him, we can at this point.
I think we. We have.
Do you have the ability to take roll right now, or can somebody else jump in and do the roll?
I can take roll. I just don't know that you can hear me do it.
You're better now. You're good now, Steve.
All right, let me go ahead and I'll start with roll and then we're going to try to get a phone so I can call in.
Okay.
So if you'll just give me a second, I got to get to the roll sheet. It's further down in my packet.
While you're doing that, the board was in executive session this evening to discuss one personnel matter. While we're waiting, let's have our moment of silence tonight, since next week is Public Works Awareness Week. Let's keep in mind, or in our thoughts and our prayers, all of our public works, workers who are out in harm's way every day. And let's just think about that. All right, Steve, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you could now call the roll.
Mr. Nohin.
I'm present.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Likecap.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Alteri.
Here.
Your managers, solicitor, and engineer are also here.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. We will. Continue while you get your sound issues worked on. At this time, we will entertain public comment for agenda items only. Again, these are items that are on the agenda. If you are a member of the public, one of the 25 attendees that we have online right now, we'd be happy to hear what you have to say. I believe Rich LaFiat is working that dashboard, if you will. So raise your hand or whatever it is you do to indicate you'd like to make a comment and we'll be heard.
So, since it looks like no one has raised their hand, and people can still raise their hand by just clicking that button on the dashboard at the bottom, but Steve, if we can, can you, and I know you're doing a lot right now, but can you transfer to those photos I was talking about?
I'm gonna try to.
We're gonna attempt this. And while Steve is doing that, you will all start seeing soon a few photos that I'm going to talk about that I want to recognize tonight that were made by individuals in the community. All right, so I'll start talking in hopes that these start downloading. There we go, perfect. So everybody should be able to see right now it is a amateur rock garden, if you will. So obviously throughout the entire coronavirus, so many things have been going on in this township that we've never experienced before. We're just, you know, things that we're adapting to. And one thing that's been sort of showing all over the community is right am acts of kindness. Whether it's, you know, this entire community coming together, or it's individuals looking out for their neighbors. It's the fire company leading parades for birthday parties, retirement parties, anniversaries, the police department doing the same exact thing. One thing that caught my eye literally last week, it would have been Wednesday, is this photo that you see right here. So this is located on Mysteria Lane, right by the township building, and it is a rock garden. And I posted a picture of it to my supervisor's Facebook page on Wednesday morning when I saw it, letting whoever know did this, that it literally, you know, arguably made my week, if not this entire stay-at-home process. And there's multiple photos, I think there's three photos, and it just shows you an array of the rocks there. So I posted this and I got, you know, a couple of feedbacks and I was able to get in contact with the parents of the individuals who did it. So this is a brainchild of Antonia, who's 11, Amelia, who's nine, they're relatives, and they both go to Culverston Elementary School. And their friends Hannah, who's 11 and goes to Paxton, as well as Christian, who's 11 and goes to Culverston. And they all live on Mysteria Lane. And the story about how this came about is that Antonia and Amelia's father did a landscaping project, ordered a bunch of river rocks and had some leftovers. And the kids one day said that they wanted to paint rocks. So they started painting rocks and then Hannah and Christian, you know, were hanging out with them via social distancing, right? On opposite sides of the driveway. And they decided they wanted to start sending messages to their neighbors. So according to Antonia, Antonia and Amelia's mom, they essentially had an assembly line. One child washed the rocks, another one was painting them, and the other two were writing messages on it. And they put all the rocks together and they went up and down the street with a wagon, leaving these rocks all at all their neighbors' houses. So when they, when they came out for the mail, or they just came out for fresh air, they saw these little, little acts of kindness that these, these young kids did. And then what they did was the leftover ones, they put together a little rock garden, as you see here, and they had a sign up, and I think the sign's back up now, saying, you know, see one, leave one. And so that's what's happening. People are leaving rocks and taking rocks. And I just thought it was a really nice thing. It's a real nice community initiative that was put into place by individuals who are young and have a bright future ahead of them and use some creativity. So I wanted to recognize Antonia. I wanted to recognize Amelia. I want to recognize Hannah, and I want to recognize Christian for inspiring me and for just doing a good thing for your community. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alteri. Where on Mysteria is this?
This is, as soon as you come off of Elgin, on the right-hand side, you'll see a utility pole, and it's all around there. So I think if anybody else wants to drop any offs, we can, we can partake in this now.
That's good to know. It's about, I don't know, 1,000 feet away from my house, so maybe I'll walk by and drop a rock off.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you. Before we move on to the agenda, I would like to also make one other announcement. As most folks know, according to the municipality's planning code, the township has a certain set number of days that we have to act on any land development or zoning type of action that comes before the Board of Supervisors. We do have a land development action off of West Chester Pike, I think that everybody's familiar with. There was a zoning curative amendment challenge that has exceeded the days allowed by the municipality's planning code by far. The township has done everything we can do to ask the applicant to grant an extension. And they have up until now, and the applicant has now said that the extension will not extend beyond the May board meeting, our May 26 meeting. So at our May 26 meeting, we will continue the hearing for the Abraham Curative Amendment for right off of West Chester Pike there. At that meeting, we will take public comment. We are, what we're asking is anybody that has public comments for that particular application, if you can, please get them in ahead of time to the township. You can email them to us and we will have them read into the record. Certainly, you're more than welcome and encouraged to join the Zoom meeting for that meeting. We will not be meeting in person, but we will be meeting via Zoom as we are now. And you're certainly encouraged to join that meeting and make public comment. And that will be recorded for the record, just like any other meeting. But we would encourage you to get those, those comments in writing. As of this point, the applicant has completed presenting his case. The township has completed their case, I believe. The, any party protestants, that could be their case. So we are down to the public comment portion of it. Again, the township would allow to continue this till whenever. But the applicant, and certainly within the applicant's right, has said that, no, they can't continue this any longer. And they would like us to render a decision. So they've granted us till May 26th. So we are going to complete the public portion of that meeting on May 26th. I want everybody to be aware of that. And hopefully you'll join us then for that meeting. As the governor's has extended the stay-at-home order, at least for our area in the state, until June 4th. Our May meeting and our June meeting will still be our first June meeting, I should say, will still be via Zoom. At that point, the township would anticipate having in place a plan of how we may continue public meetings, if we continue public meetings, if the governor actually lifts the stay-at-home order. But the, our May meeting, our first June meeting will still be conducted via Zoom. So with that, I'm going to move on. Next item on the agenda is item number six, which is consider approving the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda or consideration of any additions.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts-Likecap, seconded by Supervisor Alteri to approve this evening's agenda. Further questions or discussions on the agenda from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is minutes from our April 27th, 2020 meeting. I trust the board has had the chance to review those minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as written or consideration of any changes.
I'll make a motion.
For approval?
For approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Alteri, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Likecap to approve the agenda from our April 20th, or April 27th, 2020 meeting. Further questions or discussions from members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have two resolutions. The first is Resolution 2020-19, Recognizing National Public Works Week. Mr. Partridge, do you have that?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me, John?
I can.
Okay. Resolution number 2020-19, The Rhythm of Public Works, National Public Works Week, May 17th to the 23rd, 2020. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the township of Newtown. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest to the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Newtown Township to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. Whereas the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, resolved, designate the week, May 17th to 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week, urging all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Adopted this 11th day of May, 2020, and that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve Resolution 2020-19, Recognizing National Public Works. Any further questions or discussions on the board on this motion? None. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 2020, Recognizing Marguerite, and I'm sure I'll mess up her last name there. Marguerite Wagner. Mr. Alteri, do you have that motion, resolution?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and I believe that Marguerite and her daughter are on the line. So if they are, just raise your hand, just in case Marguerite wants to say a few words at the end of this. But it is, I'm very excited to read into proposed Resolution Number 2020, 20, Recognizing Marguerite Wagner on her 100th birthday. So whereas Newtown Township recognizes longtime resident Marguerite Wagner, who turned 100 years young on March 17th, 2020. And whereas Marguerite Wagner assisted her country in the war effort by working with the American Red Cross during World War II. And whereas Marguerite Wagner has lived in Newtown Township since 1980. And whereas Marguerite Wagner has been a staple in the Valley View Acres neighborhood, sharing her homegrown, homegrown fruits and vegetables, as well as being the first to welcome neighbors to the community. And whereas Marguerite Wagner, an avid knitter, has knitted and donated over 750 baby hats to various local hospitals over the years for newborn children. Now, therefore, be resolved, the new, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township would like to recognize Marguerite Wagner and extend Newtown Township's congratulations on achieving this monumental milestone. Adopted this 11th day of May, 2020.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Supervisor Alteri, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve Resolution 2020-20, Recognizing Marguerite Wagner. Before we vote, I noticed there's a hand up from Mary Kenny. Ms. Kenny, do you want to add anything?
Mary, you're muted.
Turn on your mic, Mary.
Yes, I would like to add that Marguerite has been a wonderful, caring, generous, kind neighbor. And I think it's so appropriate that you honor her, and it's, thank you very much, Leonard. I'm sure she appreciates it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Without further ado, all those in favor in motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Leonard.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have item 10 is a presentation on the strategic plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Neese, assuming he's got his microphone issues resolved.
Mr. Chairman. Hopefully.
Nope.
Is that better?
Still echoing.
Yeah, we're still echoing.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the Strategic Plan Committee that this board put in place a year ago, just about a little over a year ago, has been working hard on coming up with a strategic plan for the township. And they have completed their work. Attach the agenda tonight is a draft of that strategic plan. And I'm going to open up the line and allow Ms. Burke to come forward, Anita Burke. She has been our chairman of that committee, and she's going to give us a presentation this evening.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
All right, great. Well, thank you for this opportunity to provide the Board of Supervisors with the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee's recommendations for Newtown Township's strategic plan. We appreciate the Board of Supervisor's support for what we'll be presenting this evening. All of you received the strategic plan for review. Our purpose is to review the plan with an emphasis on understanding the structure of the plan document. If I could have slide, the slide three in the plan, you've received, you will see an executive summary, providing an overview of the findings of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. This committee was appointed by the Board of Supervisors in March of 2019. The purpose of S-PAC, Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, is to create a community-based strategic plan for Newtown Township for the next five years. We're here today to review key elements of that plan with you. The overriding focus of S-PAC for the entire data gathering process was on soliciting points of view to all areas of the township, homeowners, renters, business owners, and members of organizations throughout the township. What you will see in this final document are recommendations based upon the responses received from Newtown Township stakeholders. These are not S-PAC's ideas. These are the stakeholders' desires for the future of Newtown Township. Slide four, please. This is the timeline of the actions taken by S-PAC from March 2019 today to today. The committee moved from identifying the questions we wanted to ask the residents to identifying and meeting with the public and focus groups. Slide number five, these are the 74 groups to whom S-PAC reached out to get their initial thoughts about issues of most importance to them. Based on the thoughts of those who attended the meetings, a 10-question questionnaire was mailed, reaching 7,079 households. I'm pleased to report that over 1,500 individuals responded for an excellent 21% rate. Slide six, please. Here, here are the demographics of the 1,088 of the 1,500-plus who provided their demographic information. We received a good cross-section of those who've lived in Newtown Township 20 years or less and have witnessed the growth spurt. And we also had a good representation from those who have been here before all the growth. On slide number seven, the S-PAC committee members manned polls, and what you will see is a demographic cross-section of location by precinct. The S-PAC members manned the polls in each precinct during the May primary in 2019. This was an excellent way to engage residents and ask them to participate in public meetings. We asked for their help to determine the future of Newtown Township by completing a questionnaire. We were pleased to see that 1,026 of the 1,500-plus responded with their precinct and came from every precinct within the township. Precincts one and five are the largest township precincts, so it is not surprising that these had the largest number responding. I'd like to now talk about on slide eight, Five Directives of a Strategic Plan. Data from the questionnaires was analyzed, and these directives represent top five responses based on the surveys and face-to-face meetings with the public and focus groups. The percentages represent those who agreed or strongly agreed with the need for changes. I'd like to speak about the recommended directives and outcomes for the strategic plan. The outcomes and directives were created so we would be clear about what stakeholders had told us they wanted through their responses to the questionnaires. The five directives and their outcomes are as follows. How will the township know if Directive One, Ease Traffic Congestion, is being achieved? Speeding in neighborhoods is a particular concern. This directive will be achieved if speeding in neighborhoods is greatly reduced, if traffic congestion and flow are significantly improved, and if roads are in good repair. There were many comments about the condition of roads in Newtown Township, regardless of which public entity is responsible for maintenance. Second directive, support environmental initiatives will be achieved if streams, wetlands, appropriate trees and vegetation are reestablished, protected, and preserved. If open space is preserved and reclaimed, and if stormwater is managed to maintain a sustainable community by reducing flooding and supporting healthy streams and rivers. Directive three, the township will have encouraged smart growth and redevelopment if zoning, subdivision, and land development ordinances are written to address the goals of the comprehensive plan and once written are uniformly enforced. If a town center is developed and connected to other areas of the township via walks, bike trails, and a variety of transportation. If historic sites are recognized and preserved, and if businesses and other buildings are well-maintained and redeveloped to present an inviting look to the township. Directive four, make Newtown Township government more accessible will be achieved if information is clearly presented, readily available, and well-organized for easy retrieval and widely distributed. If township fiduciary and business processes are efficient and effective. If township elected and appointed officials and staff are accessible and helpful to residents and business owners. If township stakeholders are included, respected, and valued by township staff, elected and appointed officials and committees who are accessible and helpful. And if township ordinances, codes, policies, and directives are uniformly enforced. Directive five, we will know we have strengthened our community culture if township, the township is a welcoming community with activities, meeting places, and outdoor spaces for all ages, including those with disabilities. If the township is a place where people of all backgrounds, races, beliefs, and ethnicities can comfortably live, work, play, relax, shop, dine, find entertainment, and do business. If the township is a place where people who live here don't want to move from it, and those who do not live here want to move to it. Within the plan document are recommendations for each directive. That includes the directive itself, expected outcomes, a summary of input from residents, and finally, recommended initiatives to accomplish the directive. There are appendices that are in the back of the plan that provide many of the documents used by S-PAC to gather data. Also included is an analysis that led to the 10-question questionnaire and the top five directives recommended in the plan. I would like to call your attention to Appendix H, which is a sample of what the stakeholders who answered the questionnaire, what they had the opportunity to express their views on what they would change to the quality of life in Newtown Township. This Appendix H includes the comments by directive so that you can see what the township residents had to say they thought would be opportunities to help achieve the outcomes of the strategic plan. So Appendix H contains all of those comments that the, the members of the township had. In conclusion, the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee would like to express its appreciation to the members of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors for their foresight and support for creating a strategic plan. Above all, we would like to thank those stakeholders in the township who provided their thoughts, their observations, and concerns to the Newtown Township Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. The engagement of stakeholders has been critical to and is the catalyst for all the committee's work. Citizens' ideas are the backbone of this plan that the committee has recommended to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. Recognizing it is the prerogative of the board and staff to set specific goals to meet outcomes, S-PAC is volunteering to assist. While the plan directives presented in this strategic plan are for the next five years, the outcomes may extend further into the future. S-PAC is also offering to meet regularly with the supervisors and to prepare an annual outcomes progress report to share with the public. I want to extend my wholehearted thanks to my fellow committee members, John Agar, Bill Baker, Kathy Barton, Sonia DiValerio, Dave Dugree, Dave Grady, Linda McIsaac, and Walt Wolf. And a special thanks to Stephen Neese and Suzanne Wallanen for their considerable assistance. And a special thanks to Stephen Neese and Suzanne Wallanen for their considerable assistance to the committee. In conclusion, it is the hope of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee that Newtown Township truly becomes a committee that others want to emulate and be a place where people who live here don't want to move from it and those who do not live here want to move to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Anita, and I think it's us that owe you and your committee a deep, a deep thanks and gratitude because this is an amazingly excellent report. It's comprehensive, it's professional. You, you, your response rate was incredible. I, I can't say enough good things about what you've done. You and the committee and how you've put this together. This is, this is excellent. We couldn't have asked for more. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart and everything you guys have done with this.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a wonderful committee to work with and thank you for selecting such qualified members to work with. They were, they were just absolutely wonderful and did great work, working together especially. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. And, and this is an excellent document. I, I don't, at this point, I believe our next step would be to formally advertise and adopt this as the strategic plan for the township. And perhaps at future meeting, take public comment and hear supervisor comment and things of the nature that we would have. Am I correct, Mr. Neese?
Mr. Chairman, I do have it as an agenda item further down on the agenda to discuss. There's two possible directions. One is to go to the public and have them comment on where we are today before goals are created. The second would be for the board and the staff to come up with goals to achieve the initiatives so that we can get to the outcomes that we're looking for. And then from that, then, once we had those goals, put those with this and then do a formal adoption that way from the public. So there's two different ways and that's why it's on the agenda further down for further discussion.
Do we want to talk about that now rather than waiting until we get further down the agenda since it's
Yeah, yes.
screen rolling here, so why don't we
Yeah.
put it out again?
Okay. So to get, to give you just a real quick, the, the Strategic Plan Committee has, again, like you said, done a fabulous job of putting this together, but they did not feel that it was appropriate for them to give the exact goals based on not knowing what all the resources would be from financial as well as from resources related to personnel and things like that. So it was recommended that it would come back before you as a board and then come up with a plan for how we would get the goals put together and, and go forward. The, there's two options. One, the board could put the plan out as it is, get feedback and then do the goals or the board can say they really feel like there's pretty good feedback from the community already, put the goals together and then the commi- community would have an opportunity to feedback, give feedback not only on the plan but also the goals themselves. And either way, it would be productive going forward. It's just the way the board would like to do it.
I, I, I think the latter would be the, the better choice only because considering the response rate, I think so much of our community at this point has had a chance to comment on this. I, I think at this point, looking at how the board and the staff want to put together goals and then put that out to the community for discussion, I think that would be the way to proceed. So I think your, your latter choice would be the way to go. I guess I'd love to hear from other board members if they feel differently or the same.
No, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think that they've done a wonderful job of outreach and I think, and, and they've gotten a lot of comments and a lot of them are kind of similar, but I think the next step is to go ahead and start to put this plan into action. And I think that's with the goals. That's, that's my opinion.
Any other?
Yeah, I think we're ready to establish goals and you know, I think Steve and Steve can take the lead with the board on that and I think that's the next step.
Steve, do we have a timeline for what your thoughts are with that?
So my thoughts were very different three months ago.
Not withstanding, yes.
With, with what we're dealing with, you know, I, obviously if we're doing that and we're bringing the staff together and the board together, it would be a public process if the board is all together at one time, which is what I think would probably be the right way to do this. So normally I would say we would have a public meeting at a place that we could do that and have like a workshop and, and we would go and do that and, and put boards up around the room and, and really work through this. I think based on where we are today, I, I would suspect that the way we would need to go forward is basically doing a similar kind of thing that we're doing tonight is a public meeting, but we would invite the staff members to join us and we would actually start sitting down and going through that process. It would, it would be a little different than what I had intended and we'll have to work through how that's actually going to work. But I, I, that would be the way to move forward within the next couple of months to try to get these goals in place, which is what I think we want to do. If we wait on the process and we can meet publicly again, I think it's going to be more difficult in that the size of our meetings is going to be pretty limited. We've looked at even just in the meeting room itself, we've put the meeting room together. If you could see it tonight, you would see that we have it set up like a meeting could go forward and we can have twelve people from the public come as well as the board members and as well as those of us who are here on staff. And that's just three of us. So I would need to add more than that from the staff for us to make these goals work. So we would, I think, be able to have one person or two people from the public here to do that. So I think that's probably not the way to go forward right at the moment. So I, we're not under a gun to get it done by any timeframe other than we had set it for 2020 to 2024 is the timeframe. So I would like us to try to at least get goals set, you know, by the fall so that we can get things in place. One, to start getting some things done in the remaining half of this year, but be set to move forward in 2021, 22, 23 and 24.
I, I, I think I'd like to keep this process moving forward and not the, and I wasn't meaning to put you on the spot right now. Since the board seems to be in agreement that the latter choice is the way to go, perhaps at the next meeting, you could bring us a more formalized plan with some of the details and dates about how we would intend to do that. We can get that published and then start moving ahead.
Yeah, my, my initial thought is if we are in agreement to doing it through Zoom, we would set up probably doing a Friday night, Saturday kind of deal to, to get us started with the idea that we would start one evening and hopefully get the, some of the process started laid out and then really knock it out the next morning. And, you know, hopefully not need an entire day, but that it would probably still take, I mean, to really look at this and do goals is going to take some time, particularly for the five years.
Retreat on Zoom.
Yes, a retreat Zoom. So I'll start looking at that, Mr. Chair, and I'll look at reaching, I will talk with staff and I'll reach out to you to kind of get an initial thoughts that we can share with the board.
Yeah, I'd like the process moving and if you could report back to us at the next meeting where we are, I think that'd be great.
Great.
Any other board comments? All right. Moving on, next on our agenda, and again, thank you to the Strategic Planning Committee. I mean, you guys have done a great job. This is a great document for us to start working with and I'm just so impressed with the amount of outreach that came in in the comments. I think this is really helpful to us to direct us on where we need to go. So next on the agenda is reports, just staying with Mr. Neese. Actually, no, the first one is from Eileen. Eileen's on the line. Eileen, can you update us on Bishop Powell Road and Campus Boulevard, the basin?
I can. I spoke with Andy Rechek who had issued the violation notice for the basin to be cleared of all the vegetation that was actually clogging the outlet structure. I guess due to the time that the basin was initially installed, which we believe to be somewhere around the late nineteen eighties, there really wasn't associated with it any kind of planting plan. And we believe that the condition that warranted the notice of violation was just due to lack of maintenance. As is the case, a lot of times stormwater management gets put in and not properly maintained, which is one of the reasons that we have requirements in the ordinance today that the developer or applicant is responsible to provide funding to inspect facilities ten years after completion. So there currently is no plan that I'm aware of to plant it with any vegetation, but a thought I had was that maybe this is an opportunity for the EAC to reach out or just the township to reach out to the current owners, which I believe are the two lots that are served by the basin, Biren being one of them, to see if they would like to make that a special project to plant material that would help improve water quality, but not affect the functioning of the basin. So I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Eileen on this one?
No.
I think it's a good recommendation.
Yeah, Steve, can we put the EAC in touch or get the, the contact people with the two lot owners to the EAC and see if they'd be willing to get in touch with them and find out what, you know, if they can do something as far as the plannings, maybe put something together, use as an example, see what funding's out there. Our EAC is very creative at coming up with some things like this.
I definitely can do that.
Okay. Hmm, I see I have two hands up, one from a Carol, which I don't know who that is, and another from a, well, I know Cindy Mahalo. Can, can we give Carol the microphone for a moment to see what she has her hand up for?
I believe Carol can talk. She will unmute her mic.
Showing his mute up there.
There we go.
Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, good. This is Carol Wagner. I am here with my mother, Marguerite. And we have been watching, we've been watching everything going on here on the laptop. It's our first time on Zoom. And we just wanted to send out a great big thank you to, to Leonard and to the whole Board of Supervisors for, for what you have done for Mother and it's, and also to Mary, Mary Kenny, our neighbor. And we just want to thank you and it was very touching and we're very touched. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. For putting up from, putting up with me, putting up with me for twenty-three years as your neighbor, we'll, we'll give you as many resolutions as we can.
You're okay, Leonard.
And that was recorded, Carol. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cindy had her hand up. I believe Cindy had probably had something to add to the basin and the EAC discussion.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I am glad to take this issue back to the EAC. This does seem like it would support very well the budding stormwater management efforts that are going on and we'll look forward to working with the township and with Eileen to have contact with the owners and to explore the different options for this.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you. Eileen, do you have anything else to add to your report?
I only wanted to mention that we had discussed at last meetings, me putting together a proposal for an analysis on the Goshen Road Trail.
Yes.
With the idea that I'd come up with a responsible party. As I started to put together the proposal, the thought occurred to me that depending on the analysis, there may end up not being a responsible party, so to speak, other than Mother Nature. So I know per conversation that I had today, George Sharitz has been on site several times obtaining documentation of how stormwater runoff is coming from the toll site. I will have that as a comparison to what toll has indicated they can provide from before construction to review without any township funds being expended. So I wanted to let you know that I won't be producing that proposal at this point in time.
But you will be giving us a document of some sorts that at least helps us identify what the sources of the runoff are and who's responsible, correct?
Absolutely.
Even if it's us, that's fine. I do, we just need to have something in hand that, that, that kind of definitively spells this out. And then we can make a decision on how we move forward from that.
Agreed.
Eileen, did I also see that they're doing some work there by the trail parking lot?
They were doing work in response, a meeting that we had that was the impetus for that potential proposal.
Okay.
Because they had to make modifications based on what we saw with damaged silt fence. Apparently there is still some electric line work that needs to go on there in coordination with BPG. I haven't gotten those details. But that was one of the reasons that they did not completely stabilize the entire back where we had seen sod up to a certain point and then they, they matted. The reason that they did not sod the entire thing was that they had to disturb again for the electric line.
Okay.
So I have, as I mentioned, all the information that George was able to gather in the last fairly significant rain event in April and a comparison to what existed prior to. And I will report back on that as soon as I get a chance to go through all the tapes and photos and physical features.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Eileen.
Welcome.
And you're also working on the other reports or the projects that Leonard brought up and we, we issued work orders on? Okay.
We have, the fieldwork is completed for the Glendale Road investigation.
Okay.
That has to get plotted now. That's on schedule for, I believe, sometime this week.
Okay.
So yes, they are being worked on.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions, Riley? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to report of the manager. Mr. Neese, you're on.
Yes, sir. Got several things to share with you this evening. First of all, there was a meeting with the Listener HOA actually this morning and from that, the board members there have given some direction for me to follow related to just getting a complete list so that we have a complete list to share with you. So we will be doing that. And so we're, we're going to work on that and try to get that out to you as, as as soon as possible. And I will do that. The next thing is the, we, and we're still waiting back. We got to the Historic Society, the information that they needed to give you a, a recommendation back last week. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll also have that information. I've reached out to SAP late last week to set up the meeting that we were requesting. And as of yet, if not heard back, I'll reach out to them again tomorrow and try to get that meeting set up so that we can get that moving forward. The other items that I wanted to talk to you about are two. First of all, the, the staff has been First of all, the, the staff has been going through very carefully, looking at the budget, trying to find ways where we can save some dollars. And in doing so, we are looking for places to try to cut back. We've looked and found, the staff has found about $200,000 that they can cut back just in operating expenses. Some of those savings have to do with the fact that we had a low snow impact this year. So there was about $40,000 just in that area alone. We also have a, with having talked to a couple of the board members and getting a kind of an idea of what you guys are looking for, we were going to recommend putting all, we're going to recommend putting all capital on hold except for the road program, since we've already let that project, putting hold on all new hires. And that's replacing, we had a public works position that we were going to replace. We were also going to hire a part-time cleaning person and we were going to hire a communications person. So right now we're going to put all those on hold. We're going to put a hold on the intern program for this year and, and put that aside so that we can wait until we see where our finances are and, and do that. Initially looking, even with all of that being done, we anticipate still a shortfall in 2020. And so once we looked at that, we did go ahead and furlough the two crossing guards, which we'll be asking you to take action on further down in the meeting. They, I believe, based on the government response, they'll be actually better off being on unemployment than they would working for us right now, for us paying them. And so it made, it made sense to do. And so we're going to do that and then, or have done that. And we're continuing to look at ways to save financially as we go forward. Not only looking at ways to save this year, but anticipating that this might be over more than one fiscal period, we're looking at that for going into next year as well. At this point, I think I, I don't know if I mentioned, but I think that the gap is somewhere between 500 and 700,000 dollars in revenue that, that, due to the drop in revenue. I will say that property taxes, we actually have collected about 160,000 more than we had collected last year. To this point, we would need to be a little bit higher. We're about a percent and a half behind collection from last year, just because of the three percent increase that we did. And so I wanted, I wanted you to be aware of that. Finally, I wanted to share with you two tree items that are coming up. On West Chester Pike, part of the widening project, there are a handful of, I say handful, there are about five trees. Well, there are seven trees on the section of property that's part of the Phase Two, part of Ellis Preserve that need to come down for the widening. Those were going to come down anyhow as part of the, as part of Phase Two. There are an additional five trees that we're going to need to come down and they've gotten the engineers to look at. They think they can save the two that are further down, but the three that are closest to Charles Ellis Drive, coming off of that edge, heading down to Ellis Avenue, there are three deciduous trees that will need to come down due to the fact that the stormwater line has to be run basically under where they are. And that has to do with the fact of where the utility lines are. And there's a main gas line that goes down the road in that area. And so it would have been prohibitive to move the gas line. And so I wanted you to be aware of that and wanted the community to be aware of that. In addition, Pico, we met with Pico today, George and I, they're getting ready to do what I think is going to be a wonderful project off of, off of Boot Road. If you are familiar at all, Boot Road often ends up without power during storms that come through. They're coming back with what I think they called a high tension line that they're putting in. And they are going to put that in and get that in place. But in order to put that high tension line in, they have to remove, they have to cut back some trees. And they'll give us an exact list and I'll get that out as it is. I, as far as I know right now, most of the trees are just cutbacks, but there may be a couple that have to be removed. I just wanted you to be aware of that, but this is, they are going to do some line, when they do this line replacement, there's some pole replacement along with it and they'll, and that's what they're doing. But it's hopefully shoring up a problem area that the people on Boot Road are very familiar with as they've lost their power multiple times.
Mr. Neese, the on Boot Road, they're, they're just trimming trees, correct? It's, I mean, our experience at Pico in the past has been that when they put a new line in, they cut a sixty-foot wide swath of trees down. We're not looking at that here, right? We're just looking at trimming?
My understanding is most of it's trimming. There may be a tree or two as they get into it that, as they, they have to take down. But they're going to get us that information before they do it. They're going to mark them and let us know.
With regards to the three trees on West Chester Pike for the widening, we, we've looked at all options to reroute the storm sewer system and there's no way to avoid the tree removal?
That's my understanding, yes.
And you said they're deciduous trees. We're not talking the tall evergreens that are out there. We're talking deciduous trees, which I think the ones talking about are much smaller than the evergreens and things like that.
That is correct. They actually sit in front of the evergreens. Well, I say they sit in front. They sit closer to West Chester Pike than the evergreens.
Has the developer offered to build any replacement trees for us?
He has.
Where are they going to be placed on his?
That is not set yet. We're, we're going to have to look based on where the trees come out and where, how far back they have actually had to cut in for the roadway. But he is, he's more than willing to replace trees.
So we are going to get replacement trees to replace the ones that were not anticipated to be cut down?
Correct.
Now, Steve, when you're talking about the widening, that's, that's, that's in a, when you're talking about the West Chester Pike widening, all those trees, and I understand it's a Pendot project, but those trees now, I thought my understanding is that Pendot was saying that they were taking them all down, the ones in the median. Are we talking about two different widening projects?
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, Leonard. This is different than the ones in the median. Yes, the ones in the median that are coming out, those trees, that was part of the project originally. These are three trees that are on the north side of West Chester Pike. So they would be near the Main Line Health Building, well, on that section of property by, by the Main Line Health Building. And it would be, it would be, there's three that are right there as you come around the corner, working your way down to Charles Ellis, or to Ellis Avenue, from Charles Ellis Avenue.
And I know that this gets brought up every time, but I'm just going to try it anyway. And I understand it's a Pendot project, but there's no way the Pendot's saving those trees for us?
The challenge, the, the challenge is that the people that have looked at this and, and, and looked at it multiple times as engineers and also one of the arborists that was on the project, my understanding said they looked at it, they're going to do so much disturbance to the roots that if, even if they allow the trees to stay, the danger is that the trees would potentially fall into the road in the future. And that was the reason why they would feel like it's just safer to take them down in the project.
Is that Pendot's arborist?
I believe it was the arborist for the developer.
So that's the same thing as Pendot, right?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Neese, would it be possible to have the Pendot or the developer flag those three trees, maybe tie?
They're, they actually have white Xs on them.
Okay.
If, if you go down, I had tried to take some pictures that I was going to show you, but I'm having some trouble with the screen right now.
All right, but if we go out there and look, we can see the white Xs on the trees.
You can.
Okay. Mr. Neese, do you have anything else?
I, I believe that's it at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Neese on the board?
No.
All right, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is a fund transfer. This is consider approving transferring $1,173 from the Newtown Township Consolidated Account to the escrow account. A single check was given for a permit and escrow payment. It's fairly self-explanatory. I'll entertain a motion.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap to approve item 12.1, the fund transfer. Any further questions regarding this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have three rather lengthy budget adjustments. I'll try to consolidate them as best I can. The first is Budget Increase 2020-01. Essentially, this is increasing the loan proceeds budget for the 2020 road program. And the inlet program, which we've already approved. Increase also includes the engineering and contingency fee. Did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Neese?
Yes. The only other thing is that there is some dollars coming out of the capital budget that's also being increased, use of fund balance, as well as the line item where it's going to be charged to.
Right, okay. Any questions on item 13.1? I think we can all read it. It's fairly self-explanatory. If there's not, once you've had a chance to read, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap to approve adjusted item 13.1. Any further questions from members of the board on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13.2. This is a budget increase, increasing the capital budget, using fund balance, storm sewers. The increase is a result of a recommendation by the township engineer to replace the Clearbrook Road culvert and was approved by the board supervisors at our April 6, 2020 meeting, which took place after the budget had been passed, therefore the calls were not included in the 2020 budget.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve budget adjustment 13.2. Any further questions from members of the board on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 13.3, this is consider approving budget increase 2020-03, which is increasing the capital budget. The increase will come from fund balance. This increase is as a result of the recommendation by the township engineer to investigate the three flooding issues and was approved by the board supervisors at our March 23, 2020 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion was moved by Supervisor, approved by Supervisor Partridge, recommended by, or seconded by Supervisor Altieri. Any further questions from members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have two payment issues. 14.1, a consider approving your $1,314 escrow payment to Mike Spader at Five Line Golden Lane for a completed grading project.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap to approve item 14.1. Any further questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 14.2 is considering approving the $50 refund to Springton Point condo association for a meeting room rental refund. Anybody want to offer a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, seconded by Supervisor Altieri to approve refunding fifteen, fifty bucks to the Springton Point condo association. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 15.1 are the bills. Before this evening's meeting, I had a chance to review the bills on Truck Register dated today, May 11, 2020, in the amount of $183,576 and one cent. And that is my motion that we approve. Seen.
Second. Second.
Motion was seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Any questions or discussions on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 16.1, it's a developer release. This is consider approving the final bond release stated in a financial agreement dated February 28, 2013 with Red A Corporation for the entire site improvement totaling $227,622.73. Mr. Neese, as I understand this, this is just simply the final bond release because the warranty periods have expired. Am I correct in that?
That is my understanding. I, Eileen may give further comment, but that's my understanding.
No, that's correct. This has been held for quite a while. After completion, they reached out and requested the release.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question? A second.
Okay, motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap. Now, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Eileen, the, this includes that parcel where the cars are parking, correct? When you go around St. Albans Circle?
I believe that's in joint ownership, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eileen, all the work obviously is done there and everything is where that was supposed to remain living and things like that are, is, is there?
Yes.
Any further questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 16.2, consider approving escrow lease number one, the final release to Episcopal Academy for a completed dining hall addition totaling $238,448.65.
This is a much more recent completion of a project. And I believe in their preparation for the next one to be submitted, they wanted to clear up all the financial security.
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve item 16.2. Eileen, all the work has been completed?
It has, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions?
Are they, Steve, are they giving us any more issues regarding, you know, the Meadow Preserve or issues like that, chasing our residents off or anything, where we need to get their attention for a sit down?
As my understanding, there is nothing like that going on. I mean, we do need to have another meeting with them, but my understanding is that residents have been free to access the property and there has been no issues.
Have we been trying to set a meeting up and they haven't responded or have we just, or is it just because?
No, we, I was ready to start setting up a meeting and then all of the COVID stuff kind of happened. And so I just placed it on hold just because their group is fairly large, but we can move forward again.
But at the current time?
But that is a separate issue, though. That is a separate issue, arranging that meeting and releasing this escrow.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, we've done it with, well, I wasn't on the board at the time, but there's been, escrow is held for other issues too.
Oh, yeah. What happens if we hold the escrow after forty-five days, it gets deemed approved anyway? But nonetheless, I, I guess questions for Mr. Neese or confirmation. As long as the residents are able to access the Meadow Preserve without issue and as long as Episcopal's not trespassing onto the Meadow Reserve as they were doing in the past, I, I, you know, I, I don't have an issue at that point. If they want to meet with us, I'm happy to meet with them. But as long as our rights are continuing to be preserved and are recognizing our rights to use the property and, and, you know, I think we're in good shape. Am I correct, Mr. Neese?
Yes. I mean, like I said, at this point, there's been no issues. I, they, they did call over recently just because there were a lot of dogs running loose on our property. People were not keeping dogs on leashes. I actually was appreciative of that call. But more just to let us know that what was happening was that social distancing wasn't being maintained. And so we did address that and so, but no, other than that, everything's been going very well.
Okay. So the motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? If there's none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have a land development approval. This is considered approving a proposed 4,596 square foot addition on a 500 or 5.91 acre parcel in the R2 zoning district for the Newtown Square Presbyterian Church.
If, if I could, the folk from the church or from the, the engineer or architect who are ever going to present, if you would raise your hand so we can unmute you for this part.
I have a Josh Weber, I guess that is raising his hand.
Yes.
Josh, can you identify yourself for us?
Sure, if you can hear me, my name is Josh Weber with Chrisland Engineering, representing the church for this land development plan. I can take you through the plan quickly, answer any questions you have. And then go from there, I suppose.
Mr. Nice, do we have copies of the plan or will we be displaying the plan as Mr. Weber speaks?
Aye. Let me ask this question, is it on your screen right now?
No.
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 Oh, all right, I apologize, I needed to share it, hold on a second.
Mr. Weber, is anybody from the church with you this evening or on the line?
Yes, I believe there are some other members here. I believe Dwayne Hoover from Horse Construction might be available along with several of the members from the church would be here to maybe answer any other questions that I could not.
That's fine, my particular question is, is there someone that's authorized to speak on behalf of the church?
As I understand it, I'm not exactly sure who that would be, but I believe there are members.
Well, I'm seeing a James Cuscarra. Raise this hand, I'm assuming that person is authorized to speak on behalf of the church. Now, I don't know how this works, I don't know if Mr. Nice can allow him to speak also, there we go.
And I just muted him.
Mr. Cuscarra, if I'm pronouncing your name right, could you please identify yourself?
Yes, James Cuscarra, actually live 814 Ellis Avenue. Members of Newtown Square Presbyterian and Chair of the growing our future committee, which is heading up this capital campaign and the build with Horse Construction and Chrysler Engineering.
Okay, well then, Mr. Weber, I'm going to turn it over to you and you have the plans on screen, it looks like. So if you could walk us through the plan, we would greatly appreciate that.
Sure, so the, the plan that you have up on your screen currently is the existing conditions plan. So as you look at the plan, you have the church, existing church building, central to lot. You have some parking, it's entrances off to the east side. And then you have the existing parking lot to the west side, existing landscaped islands, lighting throughout those islands. Then you have the existing stormwater management system just to the north of that parking area along with the storm sewer collection system that would collect the runoff and take it to there. If you would go to the next sheet, which is probably the clearest, that would be sheet three. So this sheet would show the proposed improvements. So what we, we propose is it's a, just a little bit less than 4,600 square foot addition, which is the darker gray area. That would be the building. It would be an entry gathering area. It'd be a little bit of a worship or youth room to the southern part. They also looking at remodeling some of the existing church. But that would be the, the building addition. From there, we have some new sidewalk that would enter into where the existing parking lot would be, that would connect the southern portion around to the front where the main entrance to the sanctuary would be with some landscaping between the sidewalk and the building. And then we have an access drive along the frontage of the sidewalk and it reconfigures the, the grass islands and the parking slightly to accommodate the building addition. So a couple of parking spots are lost, however, per the zoning, we still have several more spaces than, than would have required. So that's the, the general layout as far as the addition to the building along with the modifications to the parking lot. And then on the following sheet would be the grading plan, which shows some of the modifications to the stormwater and the storm sewer system. So there's some new stormwater piping along the sidewalk and the curbing. And then the addition of a subsurface stone bed to control the runoff before it would discharge in the existing system. The sheet also shows some of the landscaping and the beds and the, and the lighting. So that's the project in a nutshell, as far as what's proposed. The only other item which, which isn't necessarily proposed as part of this project would be the easement along the frontage of Goshen Road along with the potential trail. That would be the frontage. So as you see on sheet five, kind of the lighter hatched area. The church proposes to provide the township with an easement along the entire frontage. That would be 50 feet from the rideaway in which we have a schematic of a trail that I believe is, is some of the discussions with the planning commission would be that the church provide the 50-foot rideaway or a rideaway along Goshen Road, at which point potentially in the future, township as, as necessary could extend a trail along that entire frontage. And the darker kind of path areas you see within that easement would be one option, one schematic that, that could accomplish that as it, as it goes through. This more to show that, that is feasible as far as grading and layout more than anything. So I would, I would potentially expect in the future that the township may have an alternate route or other ideas of, of what they would want or you would want for, for that path. So that's, that's essentially the presentation of what we have. I believe we walked, worked through a majority of the comments here, recently resubmitted the plans this past Friday addressing the few remaining comments. When here requesting approval this evening.
Thank you, Josh. I, I want to discuss the trail option a little bit in greater detail, but perhaps Eileen can go through and just summarize any outstanding issues or comments that she may have with this.
With respect to this easement plan, the comments that we had previously before this last submission were focused primarily on the detail at the intersection of Goshen Road and 252. The prior plan submitted did not provide all of the existing conditions with respect to the control box and the sign that are physically located there. They've been provided. Really haven't had an opportunity to, I mean, the plans were resubmitted Friday. I haven't had an opportunity, but I believe this does show that there is the potential in that 50 feet to construct a trail. Some of the grades are a little steep. But the trail itself, I believe, is proposed at 10 feet wide. Maybe less than that. It's difficult to see on this.
Eileen, we, we would normally require a sidewalk construction, correct?
That is correct, and I believe this was what the planning commission discussed as a potential alternative to providing a sidewalk.
Do we have any, I mean, I, I don't think our current township trail plan anticipates that we're extending a trail down Goshen Road, are we?
I don't believe we currently have a trail plan that shows that now. But the idea here was with the land development plan before the board, this is at least an opportunity to get an area reserved for a future construction because of the potential connection to both the Goshen Trail and the Lissiter Trail to get people to the Meadow Preserve.
Sure, I, I don't, I think it's a great idea, but a sidewalk would necessarily accomplish that too. I, I guess I seem to remember when we, School of Trick was in, which is just, you know, almost their neighbor, we made them put in sidewalks. So I guess I'm wondering why on this property we would entertain a trail, which I guess they're not even proposing to construct, they're proposing to give us the easement that we'd have to now construct as opposed to just saying put sidewalk in. And, and maybe before we get down that route, I noticed Rich Sakora has his hand up and perhaps we should hear from Rich and he can maybe enlighten us on this particular issue. Mr. Sakora?
Hello, sir. Well, I mean, this is purely a decision for the board. This isn't necessarily a recommendation from your engineer or your attorney. This was just a result of conversations with the church. It's a relatively smaller congregation compared to some larger churches in the world. The cost factor about building the sidewalk. And this was a, a way of trying to work through that connection to those two trails. You will see in front of you, there's a draft approval resolution. And should the board decide to go in this route just to allow for that connection, this isn't necess, this is not in lieu of a sidewalk, meaning this does not foreclose the ability of the township to enforce the installation of a sidewalk in the future if it needed to or determined it wanted it. The township, even in the context of not being in land development, can essentially enforce the installation of sidewalks throughout the township. That's, you know, we can do that. And so it's, this would, this would not foreclose the ability of enforcing that in the future. If, if this is the direction you want to go in.
No, I, I get that, but I mean, providing us the easement doesn't help us get any closer to getting the connection made, other than the fact that we got the easement. As you say, we can always just simply tell the property owner, oh, you got to put sidewalks in. It, it just, I don't understand, I guess, the reasoning as to, other than they can't afford it, that, you know, we make the school district, put in the sidewalk and then we're going to send a, a trail on the other side of that street. I mean, if they're giving us a trail, then, then, okay, then, then build the trail. We'll take the easement and we'll take the paved trail in it too, I guess. I mean, if that's a cheaper alternative than, than the sidewalk, I might be interested in, in, in hearing that. But I just don't want an easement because that, that means now the town's got to expend funds to, to put a hard surface in there. Now it's our easement and now we're going to, you know, put the, the funds in there to tell them to put sidewalk in. We don't need to have an easement, we need to tell them to put sidewalk in. And I appreciate that that's a small congregation. I appreciate that the addition is a quote, "small addition", but we can't keep waving sidewalk in every single development that walks in this town if we're going to say that we want to have trails and sidewalks everywhere. Okay, we want people to walk, somebody along the lines got to start putting them in. That's my thoughts. Is there anything else you have at this point, Mrs. Sakora?
No, sir, I think that was the only unusual or other than usual provision in this. And that was at paragraph three.
Yeah, I saw the resolution and we have to, we can certainly modify that on the fly if we need to. I don't think I really have an issue with the development. I didn't see anything here that caused me any great concerns. But, but for this trail issue, I mean, I'm, I guess I'd have a heart attack if a developer ever walked in and said, yeah, we're going to put your sidewalk in. I mean, it seems to be a requirement, but nobody wants to do it. So I'll stop talking, I'll let other supervisors want to climb in on this.
John has said, I, I agree. I mean, the sidewalks are already in, you know, in, in front of the school and, you know, the connection, you know, between the, the school and I guess basically 252 would be completed with the sidewalk being put in as opposed to the trail.
I guess my one concern is we let three people rip down houses completely and didn't put one piece of sidewalk back in on that, on that road since I've lived here. And the only property on that whole section of Goshen Road that has sidewalk is a school. So it's basically a sidewalk to nowhere. There's not been, when the hat, when the house was rebuilt across the street from this church, ripped down to the ground and a two-family house built back, they didn't put a liquor sidewalk in. The guy, two or three doors down, the same thing. There's five or six homes that have been ripped down and rebuilt. No, no one put a, one linear foot of sidewalk in. And in my opinion, I mean, I think we have to be, we have to be equitable if we're going to, if we're going to let all these homeowners not put sidewalk in and then come over to this church and ask them to put the sidewalk in when the church has already been there and been a good neighbor for, I don't know how many years it's been there, but it, they've been there a long time. I, I have a problem with that because first of all, no one's going to walk on a sidewalk down Goshen Road that goes from the church or from the corner to the church's parking lot to the, I don't know the name of that road there, but there's no other place to go. You still have to walk either in the street or over that person's lawn to get on to the school sidewalk. And then after that, you can't go anyplace anyway, there's no more sidewalk.
Well, if we complete, and I know there's not a connection there, if we, you know, okay, we assess that homeowner on the corner there and get that last sidewalk connection in. I mean, we could have a complete walking path for the students from the school, from the school to get to the Meadow Preserve. Okay, you know, so I, I mean, I appreciate your comments about the homeowners on the other side of the road. But, and I agree, there's no sidewalk on the other side to connect to. But on this side of the road, we have the beginnings of a sidewalk connection. I mean, I think it's certainly advantageous to think about whether a student from the school can walk to the Meadow Preserve or the Square Tavern or, you know, just get across 252. I, I could walk down the Goshen Trail, I think that there, there's some advantages here. And I hate to just say, oh yeah, we'll just take an easement. What, what's the point of an easement if we're going to come back and assess them for sidewalk anyhow?
I think that what John said earlier is, is the right mindset. And I understand everything that you're saying too, Mike. But what John said earlier is that we keep talking about wanting to make it more accessible and pushing for people to walk, but we're never doing, or we haven't really been taking the steps, to your point, Mike, to, to, to encourage that and to get that going. So to what John's saying is that, you know, down the, down the line, we could have a complete connection there, this is the beginnings of it. You know, it's not law some made it, this is a church, it's not law some made it, they're good neighbors. But I think that, you know, we, we made the school do it. And, you know, this is, this could be a full connection one day in the near future from the school to the tavern and then over to the, to the Meadow Preserve. So that's my two cents.
Even that neighborhood back in there off of Robbins and Tyson, people can walk from that neighborhood, come down Robbins, go under the sidewalk and, and, and walk over to the, to the reserve or under the, under the trail. And I see people walking in the street on Goshen Road there a lot, walking back into that, back into that neighborhood. So it is a connection, even though that, that is a broken connection from Robbins to the school. So, but you've got to remember, there's still a whole neighborhood back there.
Right, and you can more easily walk down Robbins and Tyson in the street because of the traffic volumes where you wouldn't do it on Goshen Road. Now, I'm not saying they got to build a concrete sidewalk on Goshen Road, but, you know, from my look at their plan, they have the easement there and then it looks like they're showing some type of paved walk on there. If they want to give us a paved asphalt walk that takes us from Robbins to 252 or from Tyona with the, I think it's Robbins, to 252, that'd be great. Now we've got that connection. We can get that last connection done and we've got now a, a walkway for people from that neighborhood to get over to enjoy some of these recreational amenities that we're providing and walk on these trails without having to worry about walking on Goshen Road to cross 252.
So if, if I could speak on behalf of the church, and this is what came up a couple of months ago when we were in front of the other groups, the reality is the, the length of walkway and path creates a significant income burden. And I think you're looking at it like we're the school, we have public money, or we're a huge developer, or we're, you know, a multi-billion dollar house builder and trying to hold us to the same standards. To me, this is more of a community project. We're trying to provide a place of worship for the members of our community that represents them. And if this sidewalk or walking path has to go in, And if this sidewalk or walking path has to go in, I can only tell you, I'm 90% sure that the project will just get squashed.
Well, that, that.
That's just where it's at. We have a small congregation. They've committed private money of $900,000 committed to this project. We're approaching $2 million. So we're gonna be in, have a significant mortgage. And that, you know, that's the reality of what the church wants to do. We are one of the few congregations that are growing in the country. And it'd be nice to provide Newtown Square with a place to worship that is representative of them.
Do you have an idea what the, what the cost would be to complete that sidewalk? I mean.
Estimate was, it was approaching six figures.
Well, when we.
And the whole project is what?
Well, without the pre-construction costs, we're up to 1.65, which is already about $80,000 over our conceptual budget. A lot to do with stormwater management. Even though we're building on land that isn't permeable, we're still having to account for the water. You know, adding significant costs to the project as it stands.
Mr. Cussera, again, I, I understand your, the financial realities. It's not cheap. I, I get that. But, I mean, you are here, or perhaps you're on for our discussion on strategic plan. One of the strategic plan missions was to, you know, have our ordinances and enforce them. You know, you're not a large developer. That's fine. I get that. You're not. But like, for instance, when the school district, we asked them to put in sidewalks and they have extensive costs to do that. Well, that came out of your tax dollars. That actually came out of my tax dollars. And now what you're asking the township to do is, since you can't afford it as a church, you're asking us again to now take money out of the taxpayers of Newtown Square to pay for the construction of the sidewalk then, when we already paid for the construction of the sidewalk in front of the school, essentially. I, I just don't.
I think we were, we were looking at a workaround for the township to give us some, basically some consideration is what, is what we were looking for. And I, and I understand the walkability. Believe me, I'm, I'm a resident, I've gone on 16 years in this town. I appreciate the walkability. To me, again, I know you have seen people on the street there. That's where we want to put our, our resources and start putting our foot down. It doesn't feel good to me. I walk up and down Route 3 and there are multiple scenarios where it is quite dangerous. You know, walking and, you know, the poor, poor church on the corner, a sidewalk to nowhere. I, you know, I echo Mr. Russo's comments.
Well, well, John, what about, what about if we ask them to put the piece in from the corner? The first section there that gets us up to the driveway, because then, then you'd walk down the driveway on the side of the church there too. If it's Robbins, which is what the lane's called, because then you still have to get there.
Ed, we actually proposed that originally and they felt this was a better option.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint that it would be, it would be something we could do to maybe work with them a little bit better than asking to put in.
I mean, you're looking at 350 feet, I believe, on that, on that curb.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how long this piece is, but it's probably a few hundred feet here.
Yeah, the, the entire property line to the north is, is about 815 feet. So you'd, you'd be a little bit less than 800 feet along that frontage.
No, no, what I'm saying is if you take the piece from the corner that's shown here, going from the, the electrical box on an angle up towards the front lawn of the church and then goes along, I guess, the right-of-way line to the entrance. You know, the entrance on Goshen. And then that would give you, from the entrance on Goshen, you could walk down the paved parking lot. Or the paved driveway all the way down to Robbins. And maybe that could be a compromise of some sort. I don't know. I'm just trying to make it work.
It's not a bad idea, Mr. Russo. I mean, you know, if, if they would have to adjust their easement to encompass the driveway from Robbins, in other words, they'd have to allow public access onto that driveway. And I, I might be more comfortable if there were some type of signage or striping or something that identified that as such as a public walkway. But, but certainly that's not an unreasonable compromise. If they give us the easement from their driveway to 252 and build either a asphalt or concrete path from their driveway to 252. And then transfer the easement to their driveway that takes us to Robbins and sign it and stripe it accordingly. You know, I could be fine with that. In the future, the township decides that they want to make them put inside walk, we saw the ability to do that, whether we had the easement or not. So it gives us that public walkway that we desire for now. And, and doesn't, and certainly recognizes the costs that they have with this, but they've got to be agreeable to accepting that, you know, the public will be walking in the driveway there.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a solution that would, would save them money. It would give us what we're looking for. And in all honesty, from the, from the corner to that first driveway anyway, it's a severe hill. You can see the grating. So it would be a lot easier for them to go do that path up, up that way. And then have the people walk down their driveway to the side street, in my opinion.
I think it's a very workable solution if that's something they can agree to.
Yeah, again, the, the church has been open to compromise with the township. Like I said previously, we actually showed almost exactly what now you're coming back and proposing previously. Only we took it up to the corner of the parking lot instead of to the, the mouth of the driveway. But significantly less than the 850-foot frontage.
So James, let me ask you this question. I'm assuming the busiest time for you guys is just Sundays. Do you guys have weekday services?
No, but we do have a nursery school.
Okay, and in nursery school, the busiest times, is it, is it all day nursery school? Is it half-day? How's that work?
It's just morning. My wife's, she's telling me it's just morning. But yes, they come in, they drop off, they've got a drop-off line, they've got a pick-up line. It all happens there in the front of the buildings.
I don't know. I don't know. I figured it was just like a kiss and drop sort of thing. I don't know if this is another solution to one of the other problems that we have. But would the church be, and, and please stop me, John, if I'm thinking too far out of the purview. But would the church allow, so if we do that idea that Mike Russo said, and then we also have the easement to allow pedestrians walking along the paved driveway, would the church be open to allowing, you know, except for Sundays, overflow parking for the Goshen, Goshen Trail parking lot?
I, I couldn't speak to that unfortunately. I would, I would have to go back to the church in session, run that up to. I, I believe from what I've heard from our pastor and some of the other staff is people currently park in the, in the back of that, in our upper lot, and then they walk down to the corner of Goshen Road and 252 there, where the, where Pico put in that.
No, I figured it's just an idea while we are, you know, obtaining money for the eventual parking lot in that preserve. I just figured this would be a good, you know, talking about wanting to be a good community member, which I, again, I believe you are. But I think this would be an added benefit as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fun idea, Mr. Altieri. I mean, I think Mr. Russo's solution is certainly a, a workable one. I mean, you know, certainly it's gonna be more money than you intended to spend and that could be an expensive piece of sidewalk from the driveway down to 252. But with that, and with the permission and easement that residents, that the general public could walk along your parking lot to get to that sidewalk, I think we've got beginnings of a solution. We'd need some signage there that, that identifies the trail and things like that. Maybe a yellow stripe or a white stripe or something.
We're, we're not talking about a sidewalk. We're talking about the walking trail, similar to that listener has and that the BPG property has. Because there, there are two different requirements and parameters for sidewalk versus walking trail.
I'm not looking for a walking or a sidewalk. I think I am looking for something that is paved.
So what we, what originally proposed in the meeting a couple of months back was, was a permeable concrete path. But, but walking path, you know, we're not gonna throw down wood chips or something.
Wouldn't, wouldn't asphalt be cheaper?
It, it would be, but now we've run into your water problems again.
The trail's gonna create damage to a water problem?
We could, okay, but believe me, yes, it's cheaper.
If you can come up with a, a solution for the water, I, I'm okay with an asphalt paved path. If we have, you know, if you think about it, here, when we walk in from Robbins and place in that neighborhood, they walk down your asphalt driveway. And then they get, they, they should get to another hard surface path and take them across the 252. So I, I think a, an asphalt path gives us that, you know, that's what I'd be looking for. If you want to do a permeable concrete because it's cheaper than doing whatever you gotta do for stormwater, that's fine with me too. I'm not looking for a finished sidewalk per se.
Okay.
But something that meets our trail criteria, by all means. I mean, if that's something you need to take back to the church to get, you know, permission, that's fine.
I, I guess, I'm happy to go back to the church, but I'd, I'd like to know specifically exactly, you know, the criteria. And then now we're talking about parking. So what am I going back and asking for permission for?
I think what you're asking for permission is, our expectation is that you would build some type of trail, some type of hard surface trail from the corner of 252 to your driveway. Okay, you have it depicted on your plan right there. From that.
First section.
Yeah, from the intersection to the driveway. That's as we have, as you have that depicted on the plan.
Either the permeable concrete or the asphalt, whichever works best.
Okay.
From that point, we want to see an easement along the me, remainder of your driveway that takes you out to Robbins Lane there.
Okay.
That, that would allow public use, public walking use. And some type of trail signage or signage that identifies that pedestrians may be in the driveway. Just to let, alert your drivers and users of your parking lot that pedestrians may be walking along there. And then in conjunction with what Mr. Altieri suggested, that we would, that you would allow the use of the parking spaces that are there, your upper parking spaces for trail use during non, you know, whatever, whenever you're not having services or things like that.
How many parking spaces?
That, I'm thinking that, I don't know what you call that little area there that's cut out along the drive that goes from your driveway to, to Goshen Road over to Robbins Lane, whatever that parking lot that comes off of there, it looks like it might be 10, 12 spaces. I don't know.
Oh, down there.
Yeah, right there.
I, I would think you would want it closer to the, to the trailhead now.
Well, I mean, I guess we could do that too. I don't, you know, I, I just, I'm looking at that as along the route of the easement because it just makes it easier. And rather than in this parking lot, along the route of the easement makes it easier, the, that parking lot could be included in the easement description because we're gonna have to get some type of description for that. And, you know, it could be signed, you know, parking for trail use during such and such hours. No parking or parking for churches only during such and such, something of that, some, some wording that, that would be agreeable.
And John, to the point that I'm, I'm not sure where the church has their, their main entrance, but it'll be difficult for them on a Saturday or when they have a funeral or a wedding and there's trail parking. So I think you're right. And, and James, correct me if I'm wrong. So if you have it further downward, John is, is suggesting.
That would be better for the church, correct?
Okay, yeah, so I, I.
Because we don't want to, I mean, they have to have use to their, their property.
We, we don't want to make it difficult for them. I, but I, you know, that, that's a workable solution to me. I think that gives us the, the access from that neighborhood in the future, possibly from the school to all, to the Square Tavern, to the Goshen Trail, to the Meadow Preserve, to the 252 Trail. I mean, it, it gives a, a neighborhood access to our entire trail network, essentially.
So John, why don't, based on the, you know, the input from the board, the guidance from the board, why don't we have Eileen or Rich work with them? You know, to come up with some, you know, specific options, like what, what the, what, what the trail would be made of. You know, what parking spots would be available and where, you know, some signage would need to grow up. And then bring that back to us, you know, next meeting.
Rich, are we under any deadlines at all?
I don't know what the actual deadline is right now, but we could just, you know, they could give us the extension for an additional two weeks and avoids the issue.
Mr. Cussera, would you be willing to give us the extension for the two weeks that we can work this out and come back before the board with a plan?
Yeah, we'll, we'll circle up on our end. We'll work with Eileen and Rich to get that verbiage if the church is amenable to that and get that back over to you.
Good, thank you. Is there any other questions from members of the board? Is everybody okay with this plan?
I just wanted to note, because of the holiday, it will be slightly over two weeks. We have till the 26th.
Yes, okay.
Every day's a holiday, it feels like. Oh, sorry I said it out loud.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I hope we can work this out.
Me too.
Give me a call tomorrow, Mr. Cussera.
Sounds good, Mr. Sakora.
Great idea, Mr. Russo.
Just trying to work with them. They're good, they're good people over there and they do a good job with all the little kids in the community.
And, and we think they're a great community partner. We're not trying to hurt them at all. We just have an opportunity here and, and we, we need to treat everybody the same, I guess, whether it's good or bad. So.
Right, and I agree with you there.
So fantastic. All right, nothing further after this item. We will move on to new business. First on the agenda is consider approving the Township Pollution Reduction Plan, our MS4 Plan. I guess Eileen is up?
I'm up again. Following the last meeting, we had the narrative, along with all of the other documents posted on the township's website. There were some additional questions from the EAC. They wanted an explanation of why we were specifically targeting impervious grassy areas for tree planting. That was not intentional for any other reason than showing it as a possible BMP that could be undertaken by the township in attempting to lessen the stream restoration that would be needed. And incorporating other best management practices into the plan, as we discussed last time, being Plan B. They also wanted to know if the $1.4 million for the cost of the implementation included engineering design costs. And I've replied this afternoon that yes, it does include engineering design and oversight for implementation. And then another question regarding the cost comparison with respect to tree planting in both paved and unpaved areas. It was simply an exercise to show the differentiation between the potential sediment removal of different controls. There really wasn't any very specific cost estimating done just to show the comparison and the sediment removal. So that wrapped up the questions. And I didn't know if any other board members had any, if they had the opportunity to read through. But it looks as if this is ready to adopt if you are of a mind to get it back to DEP so that we can have it reviewed by them, confirm that it's acceptable and start our five-year permit period.
And you had, we had asked and you had provided in our packets the full document that would go to DEP. I, I, I hope that everyone's had the chance to review that. So we are certainly under a deadline to approve this or else DEP gets mad at us. So does any board member have any question on this and can we move forward?
Mr. Chairman, I would, that after last meeting, I did request the extension and DP gave us until the 15th, which I believe is later this week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reese. If, if there's no questions or comments from the board members, I guess we are, we should take, we need to take a vote on this and, and move forward with the plan.
John, I'll put a motion on the table to approve.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions made by Supervisor Portis, second by Supervisor Altieri to approve our MS4 plan and submit said plan to DEP. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments from members of the board on this issue? Seeing none. All those who favorably signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Nice, Eileen, thank you, and please submit the plan to DEP.
Thank you, we will.
Uh, item 18.2, Mr. Nice, you're going to discuss the future reopening of our parks and facilities?
Y- yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've been, uh, really looking at and working here at the township, uh, trying to be prepared when the governor does allow us to open back up what that will look like. Um, we've been installing some Plexiglas windows, uh, for protection. We've, uh, been looking at, uh, for employees, seating areas, spreading people out further and doing all of those things to handle employees, but we've also been looking at how we're going to do that uh, related to bringing the public back into the building. Uh, even on a just taking, uh, payments and all of those kind of things. And so we are, we're, we're moving along in that. Um, one of the things that's highly being recommended, of course, is that we uh, put up signage and all of those kinds of things and letting people know what the expectations are. One of the challenges that we're having is that, uh, the expectations seem to be changing as time goes on. And what the, what makes sense, uh, I mean, everybody kind of knows right now that, you know, staying six feet apart. Currently, the requirement's wearing a mask, uh, those kind of things, but sometimes those things change, something gets added to it, something gets taken away. And so, uh, the staff is just looking a little bit for direction and hoping uh, that we can start looking at, we'd like to do some signs, get them ready so that when it is time we can open up and we don't have to say, okay, now we'll go and create signs and then open up. So we want to get all that done. Uh, but what our suggestion would be is that we would put a sign together that basically says that, uh, please follow the current CDC guidelines, uh, for, uh, safety during this time in public areas, inside and out. Kind of guidelines, uh, we will put some more specifics inside, you know, reminding people to wash hands regularly. Uh, we will, uh, on a temporary basis, put some signs up that will require masks within the building uh, as we do open back up, as long as that's still a, a directive. Uh, but we're wanting a more broad sign, uh, in the parks and more broad sign that will stay up as that goes along, but we wanted to just run that by the board and make sure that the board was kind of in agreement, or if you had any direction that you wanted us looking at specifically.
I, I, I think that's the way to go. It avoids us having to create multiple different signs and putting them up and taking them down. As long as we have a sign that follows CDC guidelines and states so, then I think that's, you know, in my mind, that seems to be the most, makes the most sense. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Yeah, John, I mean, I attended the Parks and Recs Board with Steve last week and, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, this idea was, uh, you know, the, the, the members of the committee thought that, um, you know, it, it, it was the way to go and, uh, I think we should move forward with it.
Excellent, excellent.
We also discussed, because I was in that as well, we also discussed the idea of doing it phased. And I don't know if Steve mentioned that, if he did, I apologize, but instead of doing it right across, um, you know, we open them up phase, maybe two at a time. Instead of having just one where everybody runs the one that's open, um, we do two of them, see how it all goes and open up another one. And again, while we open up the parks, the playground equipment themselves are still completely closed off.
Yeah, yeah, and Len, um, who was gonna look at the, along those lines at the priority? Uh, Steve, Steve, was that you that was gonna look at the priority of the openings if we phased it, or was that the committee? Forget where that.
Well, I think we'll go back with the, when the Parks Committee meets again and, you know, we'll be meeting with them right before or right after the, the potential next opening that the governor gives us, uh, because they meet the first Thursday in June. But, um, we'll, we'll start, George and I'll start looking at laying it out, uh, coming up with a plan that we would present to the Parks Committee, uh, and potentially back to you as a board, um, depending on how long we have. But one of, it, Len came up with this idea of, of this phased approach. And Leonard, when he brought that up, was, it was something that the committee thought was a good idea and we agreed. Uh, and so, uh, which is along the lines of what we've been thinking, and so we wanted to, we want to do that. What, when we look at, the one thing that we're trying to figure out is if we open up a park, certain parks have a lot more public access issues in regards to what people can touch. Um, for example, when you open up Drexel Lodge, you've got to make a decision about, do you open up bathrooms? Do you not open up bathrooms? Uh, do you open up, uh, the pavilion or not open up the pavilion? Uh, what about the playground? And so, um, you, that's the piece that we kind of have to work through a little bit and talk about how we do that. And if we're going to open the park, how do we secure the things that we're not opening? Um, so that people are, understand that those things are off limits at this time for their safety. Uh, you know, yellow tape is a great way to give a warning, but it really doesn't close something off. Uh, we know the orange fence has helped, but there have been people that have actually stepped over the orange fence. And we've, we've found that, and so we think if we're gonna open up the park, we probably are gonna have to go with something a little bit more sturdy uh, of fences around playgrounds and things like that, so, but we will look at that and we'll put that together. I think George did a first run. I mean, we're talking a couple thousand dollars to secure off all of those kind of locations with more like a deer fencing or something like that that would be more solid.
So those, so Steve, those considerations are, uh, gonna go into the decision of, of, of where the priorities are as far as which ones open first, right?
Yeah, and we've even talked about potentially limiting the, the amount of parking at a park, uh, just to limit the number of people there, uh, as well.
If I'm wrong on this, wasn't it Brookside and Drexel Lodge they were talking about at the committee?
That was our, that was our suggestion potentially as our first two parks, because they're pretty large and allow people to separate. Um, and both parks, uh, have, it, though both parks have public areas, if you, even if you take the, the, or potential high-touch areas, if you take and get those kind of cordoned off, you still have a lot of room for people to move around, do walking and things like that.
Uh, Mr. Nice, as I understand it, the Parks and Rec Committee meets on next, next on June 4th, which is the day that the state um, supposedly is going to perhaps consider lifting the requirements. So perhaps at the next Parks and Recs meeting, staff and the board and our committee could uh, hammer this out and then have something for the June, the first June meeting with the board, which is the following Monday, June 8th, and then assuming we're all on the same page, then we can implement that plan on June 9th.
Yep, and we'll, we'll get, working on everything and get everything lined out so that if, if, if everybody's agreement, we'll have everything pretty much ready to go so we can do it as quickly as possible. Assuming June 4th really is our opening date.
That's an assumption, yes, but that sounds like a plan, that's okay. Any other questions regarding the reopening of parks and facility? I know, Mr. Nice, do you want to comment on facilities themselves or?
Facilities themselves, you know, we're, we're continuing to work on, I think I made, made mention. Um, right now, my concern for public meetings is, uh, you know, I think I mentioned earlier, we can get about 12, maybe 16 people, uh, other than the board in the room. And so if we're practicing the distancing, and so that might be a challenge for public meetings. Uh, I'm looking into whether or not we can continue to do Zoom meetings and yet have you here and doing recording and doing that. And so I'm looking for options that will allow for you to go forward for a period of time, maybe doing a mixture. Uh, if not, then we will probably look at, uh, maybe even a little longer period of time, uh, beforehand. If you, if you've watched what the governor has put out as the phasing, even in that first phase, we would not be able to do uh, the, the first phase, we would, because of the requirement of the number of people in a public gathering, we would be over that number, uh, if, if we just had a board meeting and the standard number of public showing up. Uh, so I think we're gonna have, I think we may be a little later than June, even if the, even if the opening comes in that way.
Absolutely.
On that, so, uh, and, you know, as, like even tonight, there's three of us in the main room and we're spread out, one in the back corner, one, and both, we're all the way over and we keep putting our masks on. It's kind of a challenge, and so, uh, we're, we're, we obviously want to make it work, but at the same time, we want to, we want to keep everybody safe. When we open up the building for public to come in, the library's working on a plan. Uh, I will share that based on what I know, I think it's a plan that libraries across the country are using because I, my, I know my stepsister works for a library and she is going through some of the very same things. But they'll be doing delivery out to the curb of books, um, in the initial phase. Uh, it'll be a while before the library's fully open, it'll be a while before the building is fully open. It'll be kind of phasing it in over time, allowing people to come in and start doing that. But we are putting things in place today, so whenever that's able to be there, we'll be able to open up and ready to go.
Wouldn't be surprised if it's not August or September.
We may make the decision to do our summer meetings this way, just to play it safe.
Yep.
Okay, well, as long as we're maintaining safety and doing what we need to do and able to conduct meetings, I mean, you know, I, okay, I, I know I was not a big initial fan of doing Zoom meetings, but when you look at the number of attendees are getting on these meetings, it's, it's exceeding what we might get normally for a meeting, so. It may, maybe I'm a dinosaur missing the boat on this, so maybe it is a plan that we should be looking at in greater detail, so.
Yep.
Hey, anything else, Mr. Nice?
That's it on, on those.
Any questions for Mr. Nice on opening up parks and facilities? Hi, Mr. Nice, please continue. Item 16.3, consider approving the furloughing of part-time employees.
Yeah, so, um, it, as part of a cost savings and as part of understanding, uh, where we are with our employees, we had two part-time employees who were crossing guards. And initially, we kept them on, kind of waiting to see what was gonna happen with the school year. Um, obviously with the current school year being canceled, it made sense to, uh, to allow that, to not continue to pay them on the payroll. Um, and, uh, so we, we've recommended that. Uh, we have one other part-time employee who's, who's been on furlough, who has not been coming in. Um, and we're kind of giving them the option, of course, that gives them the chance then to claim unemployment. Uh, and because the township is self-insured, uh, there are some costs. However, the federal government's, uh, helping, uh, for the first 50% of this. Uh, and there is a potential item before the state, uh, that might help with the other 50% uh, that would require us to purchase the, um, I forget what it's called, but it's a workers' comp reserve that you have to buy into. Uh, I've looked at, it would be about $5,400 on our part. Um, right now, I believe our part of paying out's actually less than that. And so we're probably better off right now, just the way we are. If we were to extend into the school year in Ja, uh, in September, that may be a little different story, but for right now, we're better off where we are.
Steve, you don't need board action to do this furlough, do you? Or do, or do?
Well, I think because I've furloughed employees, usually the board has, uh, the, the authority over hiring and firing. This isn't really a hiring and firing, uh, but I, I, I probably would wise step forward, weigh in on it.
All right, I, I, I'll make a motion to, to give the township manager, um, the authority to make decisions on furloughing part-time employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Partridge, second by Supervisor Roberts. Let me see if I can get some clarification on the motion. Are we saying in general, or are we just saying for these two particular employees at this time?
Well, I think you're the only two part-timers, right, Steve?
Well, we have the one other one who's just not been working, so it would give the option for him as well.
So I'll say, um, all current part-time employees, um, will give the township manager the authority to make decisions on furloughing all current part-time employees as of this date, uh, May 11th.
Supervisor Roberts, like, have your, your second so good?
Second, yep.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
Is this for moving forward forever, Ed, or are we talking about this in, in relation to the coronavirus? Because that's what the original motion, the way it's written is just for, um, these two in particular. I just want to make sure I understand, are we, are we, are we asking, are we granting new authority to the township manager moving forward for everything, or just in relation to this, to this motion?
I would say it's, um, you know, we limit it to the current situation, so, um, let's say for the next, um, next three months, uh, that the township manager has the authority for the next three months.
For part-time or full-time?
Part-time employees. For part-time employees, specifically part-time employees and specifically for, for the next three months. Um, and, and the reason would be related to the current, uh, coronavirus crisis. That Steve has the authority to furlough, uh, any current part-time employees.
Are we all okay with that motion?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, everybody's good, all right. All those who favorably signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 18.4 was the strategic plan, which we've already discussed. So we're gonna move on to all business discussion of the tree ordinance. Who wants to start?
Joe.
Something you gotta start, Joe.
Mute, yeah, no, the, the only reason it's on there is just to basically give you an update where I am with it.
Okay.
Um, I, I made, as you know, the, the ordinance was like 20 pages long, so I made some of the important changes regarding the hazard tree, keeping everything off private property. Um, I was going through the rest of it, and then I got a call, uh, from Suzanne. I think it was Suzanne to send it to Harry, the gentleman from, um, the EAC.
Yeah, Harry Bryant.
Yeah, he wanted to look at what I had done so far and, uh, comment. So I will have it ready, though, for the board to consider approving it for advertising at the next meeting. I did, you know, I went through, through it with most of the changes. I gotta go through it one more time. My, just for clarification, when we spoke, because I can't read my handwriting, we were not interested in creating a new commission, but we're gonna keep it under the auspices of the Parks and Rec Commission, correct?
Of the Parks and Rec or EAC, yes, I did not, I mean, I'm speaking as myself, but I didn't see a, a reason that we were creating yet another uh, commission or body or something. I thought that we could include this in one of our current, um, you know, under responsibilities, one of our current committees.
I looked at the statute again and again, they call it, uh, the Shade Tree, uh, Commission. It says, if no commission exists, you can go with the Board of Supervisors, but it also says when there exists this, a board for the care of public parks, the Board of Supervisors may confer on the Recreation Board all the powers and duties under this article for a trade, uh, Shade Tree Commission. Which is where you get authority for.
The auspices of our current Parks Recreation Committee, correct?
Right, I mean, I'll, I'll put it in there, you guys can discuss it at the next meeting and
okay.
See what you want to do as opposed to creating a, um, new commission, but my notes indicate they weren't, really weren't interested in creating a whole new commission without having to appoint more people on it.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Joe, because I couldn't find my, my, uh, I'm sorry, I just cut you off, Steve.
Yeah, but that's, go ahead, go ahead and say it, and I'll speak afterwards.
Um, Joe, because I couldn't find the copy that I had, but with this, I know that, um, the original, um, language that you said you took out regarding the hazard trees. Um, so would this, what if, what if an individual has a branch that is still somewhat connected to their tree, but is partially broken and dangling? Would that be something, the way that, you know, I haven't seen the revisions that you've made, but was that something that would give this, that this ordinance would allow the township to go in and remove it and then lean it, or the shade commissioner? How, how would that work if it's still connected to the tree, partially dangling?
We were, yeah, that would still be okay, I think, but it's all, it's all as it pertains to our right of way or. or streets. That's when we would have, you know, you'd go, you'd notify the homeowner and say, you got to get this down because it's potentially, or it is a hazard to our right-of-way or the street. You got to let them know to do it. But it's only how it affects, you know, the public right-of-way or the public street is what we were discussing, leaving that in, leaving in the information with stormwater. And I think it's Steve had mentioned, there was a clearing of a bunch of trees on a property for some was being developed and we had no mechanism for, you know, controlling the number of trees that are taken down, except for stormwater.
So at the board's direction from the last meeting, and I, I know that thought may not be finished. And so if you want to talk about it before you do.
Finished. I mean, only from a stormwater perspective, it wasn't really stopping the, the board, the township couldn't go in and say, you're cutting down too many trees. Hold on, we got to take a look at this kind of thing. This, this ordinance allows us, does that, we do have some teeth in that.
Yep.
That's, that seemed like that was something that the board, you know, was interested in as well as we were going to keep the info on the heritage tree and the private property out as much as possible.
So the board had directed me to go back to the EAC and talk to them specifically about the EAC serving as the tree commission. The EAC really did recommend that there be a separate commission. One, because they really believe there needs to be an arborist a part of it. And two, they did not necessarily feel that the, for sure that the EAC members all felt like they weren't sure that they had the expertise or if they had time to serve to do both. And so I, I just wanted to share that back because you had asked me to ask that question. And so I'm responding back with that.
So with that being said, what, why wouldn't we think about doing, you know, as Joe said, it's, it's referred to in the, in the draft right now as a shade tree commission. Why wouldn't we think about just doing that?
Are you asking me?
No, no, I'm just asking my fellow supervisors. I mean.
Okay.
Do you, again, I, I, you know, without putting too fine a point on it, we, we don't necessarily have an overflow of people that want to serve on any of our commissions. I'm a little hesitant to create yet another opportunity for people to serve and then have a scramble around trying to plug in warm bodies into that position. If we, if we have people that are actively interested in serving on a shade tree commission, that's fine. But we even still have some vacancies on some of the commissions that we have now.
Now, I hear you on that. But isn't Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I might be incorrect on this, but doesn't the commission pull from different bodies? Like, isn't it one from the EAC, one from something else and one from, from another? Isn't that the way it's written now? Or, or, or am I getting that confused with another ordinance?
Yeah, I, I didn't see, I don't, I don't recall that being in there, Lenny. The, you know, the whole, the whole issue with the, you know, creating the whole board, that was the, that was, you know, creating a whole new commission. If the EAC is concerned about having the township or arborist, the township arborist could still be appointed, but it would be working with the Parks and Rec and not a separate commission.
Correct. We still have a responsibility to appoint a township arborist, which we would do and probably change the enabling legislation for the Parks and Rec Committee to include the township arborist as a member.
Correct.
You know, you know, John, I don't, I, I hear what you say about a separate committee and, you know, trying to fill it. But I mean, I'm open to it. Why don't we let Steve go back to the EAC and, you know, see if maybe some of the members of the EAC also want to serve and on the, on the shade tree commission? And I don't know, Joe, how many members are required?
I think it's five.
So.
Let me look.
Why don't we see, maybe we get some members from the EAC and then just have to add a few, a few other members? I mean, are you open to it, John, or are you?
I, I don't, I mean, I'm not carved in stone in any which way you want. I'm just not trying to create another committee that, I mean, I'm looking at some of the chats now and getting people that already belong to committees that want to serve on this committee. I, I don't, I, I don't understand why people want to go to a, a committee meeting every single night of the week. And that's fine if they want to. I appreciate their help and, but, you know, I, I guess I'm not trying to tell people that, hey, we really want you to serve and we want you to serve three nights a week on, on a committee. I am trying to lessen everyone's workload to some extent. I think we have a lot of talent in our EAC. I think we have a lot of talent in our Parks and Rec Committee. I, I don't know that we want to create more committees without, obviously we got to appoint a township arborist. I understand that. But frankly, I can go any way, whatever the board wants to do on this.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm flexible. How about the rest of the board?
I mean, I hear what you're saying and I hear what the chats are saying. I personally would be more inclined with creating a separate committee and no disrespect to anyone who is already on any of these other boards. But we need to start really expanding more involvement. That's one of the, right, one of the, the big pushes. We have all these new people who are moving into the township. You know, I've been trying to do all I can to, to reach, you know, existing neighbors, new neighbor, so on and so forth. But I think that by having a new commission and having individuals who aren't serving on them, on serving on current boards now, gives more opportunity for individuals to be involved in their local community. Yes, I will be the first one to, to say to you, it's extremely difficult to get people to volunteer for a lot of these boards and commissions. But I think that part of that has to also do with people don't really know what a lot of our boards and commissions do. Sometimes they don't really see the information when there is a vacancy or an opening. I mean, I, I pounded the pavement for people to apply for different boards when we did the reorganization. So I know exactly what you're talking about, John. But from my point of view, I think that it goes into a separate committee. If that ordinance doesn't already say now that it pulls one person from EAC, one person from Parks and Rec, so on and so forth, then I think it, it behooves the township to try to expand the involvement and to go out and try to get, you know, new people who want to be involved.
Mr. Altieri, bringing you down to the supervisor liaison for the tree, shade tree commission?
Add it on there. Let's just add it on.
Just saying.
If I could interrupt just a minute, and I apologize, but because we've referred to the chats, I first want to make note that we really aren't taking messaging through chats. And secondly, I want to make note that a couple of these chats were sent just to the panelists, which is you as a board. So therefore in, to be totally transparent, if you don't mind, I think we ought to read the chat into the record real quickly, just because we've referenced them. I believe there are two. And if I get this right, yes, there are, I think are two. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll just go ahead and read them in, just so that we've been transparent.
If it's necessary, please do.
I think it is. Is there, the, the first chat came from Cindy Mahalo. Is there any way that for participants to see how many other participants there are and who the other participants are? And I'm not sure. I'll have to look into that. I applaud the persisting push for the Presbyterian access at the Newtown Square Presbyterian Church Development Plans. I also applaud Mr. Russo's creativity in proposing an affordable compromise to achieve the access right-of-way in the parking lot and Supervisor Altieri's proposal to share the parking for trail system users. That's a great way to minimize the impervious surface, surface through shared resources. Bravo. It then goes on to say, the EAC recommends creating a separate tree commission, given the increased importance of specialized knowledge required to effectively care for the community, for community tree canopy. And then from Mr. Seligson, for my part, I would like a separate tree commission. I see Bruce Killen, Cindy Mahalo, myself, an arborist and a member of the supervisors. I've actually since now turned the chat off because, because we don't want chat for public comment. I, I apologize. We left chat on for, for initial part of public comment to make sure we got things. I, I forgot to turn it off, but I just wanted to put it where it needed to be.
And just so we're clear, the reason why we do that is because of the Sunshine Act, just to get residents.
That's true.
But, but so far through the board discussion, I, I didn't hear any board members object to having a separate commission, if, if, if that's where we end up, right?
Well, we, we need to, we need to give Joe a, at least direction at this point. We're not advertising anything, but at least not yet. But we need to give Joe some direction on how to write the ordinance. And that's what he's asked us for. So I guess, I mean, you can thumbs up or thumbs down how the board wants to.
All right.
Why don't we ask the liaison, Leonard?
I mean, I'll write it up any way, any way you want. I don't think though, if, for whatever reason, if I wrote it up as a separate commission or Parks and Rec and you changed your mind in two weeks and decided that, you know, we have, you, you want to go a different route, I don't, it's not a big deal one way or the other, because you're going to advertise it. And then when you advertise it, you put it up for a vote. Again, if you change your mind again, I don't think it's that much significance that you couldn't change it again, without having to re-advertise. I don't think it's a substantive change. The body, the powers that, that are in there and the things that they can do is really the substance of the ordinance. Who actually heads it, I think is just a procedural part. So we could go back and forth two more times if you'd like.
Joe, why don't, why don't you write it up as a separate commission for our discussion? I'd like, I want to keep this moving. So if you could write that up and then give us a document before the next meeting that we can all have a chance to read, we can pick around all the points of that document and then we can advertise it. That's what we decided to do.
Then you can tell me what to advertise. Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Any other discussion on the tree ordinance? All right. Seeing none. Moving on to item twenty. Item twenty point one, we tabled, that's the land development for the Newtown Square Presbyterian Church. Item twenty point two, consider approving resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two, extending the discount period and face value period for payment of real property taxes. Mr. Partridge, you have that ordinance?
Yeah, I do, John. Okay.
You want to read that?
Yep. Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, extending discount period and face value period for payment of real property taxes. Whereas by Pennsylvania Act number fifteen of two thousand twenty, and in response to hardships caused by the COVID-19 disaster emergency, local taxing districts within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania may temporarily extend discount and face value periods for payment of real property taxes. And whereas during and as a result of said emergency, the Board of Supervisors now desires to afford to taxpayers of Newtown Township certain relief, and in particular, the benefit of the extension of payment of real property taxes as authorized by Pennsylvania Act number fifteen of two thousand twenty. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, that Newtown Township shall, one, collect the real property taxes at the township's prescribed discount rate through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and, two, waive any fee or penalty otherwise associated with delay payment of the real estate, of the real property tax it paid in full by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This resolution shall apply only to real property taxes for calendar year two thousand twenty. The Secretary of Newtown Township shall deliver a copy of this resolution to the tax collector immediately upon enactment resolved this eleventh day of May, two thousand twenty. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
My motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Altieri. We are voting to extend the tax discount and face value period to September thirtieth, correct?
That's correct. It's going to match the county. The one other thing that I would ask is that you would make it resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one, since we didn't act on twenty twenty dash twenty-one. That way we keep them in order.
Mr. Partridge, you're fine with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Altieri, you're fine with this, is chicken?
I'm fine.
Is there any further discussion from the board on this item?
Just, just quick, they don't have it in front of me. What's extended to again? September thirtieth?
Yes.
It'll match the, it'll match what the county did.
Yep.
The county took theirs through April thirtieth, which you had already agreed to do. We didn't pass a resolution, which we needed to do for that. That's why this is included. And then the, the second side was the, they did their face value, as people know it, the, the basic piece and through September thirty. So it's matching.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor, please, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no additional business listed. Would any board member like to make a comment?
Of course I do. And it'll be brief, but I know that we talked about the, and I know I'm belaboring this point and it's, and it's PennDOT project, but going back to the widening of West Chester Pike, I know that the arborist for the, the, for the project engineer or whoever it was, gave an opinion that the disruption to the roots would, would cause so much disturbance to the tree that they would eventually, you know, potentially die and fall onto the roadway. I guess Eileen or Stantec being the township arborist, is that something that you agree with as well? Or is that something you need to do additional research on to get back to us on? I mean, because you know what I'm thinking of, right? It, it behooves that engineer to, to, to fit whatever that criteria is.
Let me ask this question. Mr. Nice, can you get a letter from a certified arborist on behalf of either PennDOT or the developer that, that states this that you've provided us?
I can always ask.
They, they said they had an arborist look at it. Well, let, let's see that. There's a certification for arborists. I know a lot of them. They would pen a letter that says the, exactly what you've told us. And I think, is that to take care of the issue, Mr. Altieri?
Yeah, that would satisfy me because I just want to make, and again, I just want to make sure PennDOT is, knows how much this, you know, those trees. A lot of people are, are going to be upset when they start coming down. And the unfortunate thing is that, again, it's a PennDOT project. And I just want to make sure that we have made sure that PennDOT has gone to the, to the lengths that they can to preserve them if, if they can be.
Yeah, I, I think if we have a letter from an arborist, then I think that they, that at least, while we may not be happy that trees have to come down, at least we've got something in the file that says that here's why they had to come down and was made by a professional that does this for a living.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Altieri?
Um, no, that's it for tonight.
Fantastic.
Thank you, everyone.
That brings us to the public comment session, section of the meeting. If there's any members of the public that have a question about anything that's not on this evening's agenda or a comment, please raise your hand and be heard. And I see one hand from Patty Wilson.
Patty Wilson, forty-one eleven Battles Lane. I, my first question is in relation to what Leonard was just asking. I understood that that project on West Chester Pike was actually the developer doing that project, not PennDOT. Do, do I not have a good understanding of that? Who, who's actually doing the work on West Chester Pike for the widening?
The developer prepared the plans and in conjunction with his own funding, obtained some PennDOT funding. Because it's on a PennDOT road involving additional PennDOT funding, PennDOT actually was called Let the Project. So PennDOT put the project out for bid, PennDOT hired the contractor and PennDOT is inspecting the construction of the work. The developer is contributing money to that.
So, so in line with what Leonard has just asked, then I would encourage you to also get, I guess, the second opinion, because I too have been distressed by the number of trees that seem to come down as a result of development, which brings me to a second comment, which is you can't help but notice on the Corey property, that he has essentially clear-cut that property of all of the trees, which I can't help but think is going to be a nightmare of stormwater issues for those folks that are downstream on Hickory. And, and I hope that as a result of seeing that, you, you look very closely at the tree ordinance to see what can be done. I mean, clearly, nothing's being done right now, other than the clear-cutting. And to also offer as part of that, since Mr. Corey is coming back in on the twenty-sixth, if you could offer at, at this time, the email address at which you would like residents to provide public comment on that particular application. Do you want it sent to the public comment at Newtown Township.org? Or is there somewhere else you'd like that public comment sent for that particular application? comment sent for that particular application?
All public comments should be sent to publiccomment, one word, at NewtownTownship, also one word, dot org.
Great, thank you very much. Um, the third thing is, I want to personally thank Public Works, who were out last week after the crazy windstorm. Um, they rushed to reopen our wor- road, they moved things out of the way, they made things safe, and they were um, a- immediately available when, uh, Mark and I called about the problem. Um, we thank them for that, and we're gonna urge you to not rush to reopen the township building. It certainly seems, at least in our experience, that all of the services that the, the township provides, perhaps other than the, um, library, um, have not only, you know, exceeded expectations, but people are clearly trying very hard to reassure, um, and certainly did in our case. Um, so we thank them for that, and we're gonna urge you to not have that township building, um, a rush to reopen, even if you get permission to. Um, and, uh, lastly, um, you know, on behalf of some very good friends of mine, who are hairdressers and own garden centers and are the small business people in our township, I'm gonna ask that the township supervisors and the township, if there is any way possible to take a stand to get the hair salons reopened, the barber shops reopened, and the small business garden centers reopened, who, you know, certainly I believe, um, could be opened um, as safely as many other businesses. I, I know, you know, at, at, in at least one case, um, that it, it's a salon that's at risk of closing, that has served this community for, at this point, at least 20 years, who, who is incredibly frustrated with the, um, stance the governor has taken. Um, I've written to county council, um, I'm about ready to reach out to our local representative. These are our neighbors who own these businesses. I'd love to see you guys take a stand as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. I appreciate, certainly, we appreciate your comments regarding public works, and we'll make sure that those comments are passed on. I'm glad that, that they worked out and took care of you quickly. Are you trying to say that everybody in the board needs a haircut? Thank you.
I'm not making that comment. I'm, I'm just speaking on behalf of all of us that would love to not be gray anymore.
Is there, I see, uh, no other hands for public comment, unless I'm missing any.
I do not.
Nope, I don't see any either. So that will conclude our meeting. Uh, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is, uh, May 26th, it is a Tuesday, because the 25th is Memorial Day, so our next meeting is, uh, May 26th, 2020 on Zoom. Appreciate everyone for participating. Uh, please stay safe, social distance, wear your mask, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure I hit the right email address for the.